Welcome to the East Brandywine Township Board of Supervisors Work Session for Thursday, July 11, 2019. Just a reminder, your recording device will be used during this meeting. I'm going to open it up for public comment for non-agenda items. And just a reminder, rules for conduct of public meetings established by Resolution 2008. The time allotted each individual making a comment shall be three minutes unless otherwise set by the presiding officer. Additional public comment may be granted at the discretion of the presiding officer at the conclusion of the meeting. Do I have any public comment for non-agenda items? Mr. Hudvols.
I see I have a byline here, too, so I better get up here. As you know, I'm your Dark representative. I've been so for many years. And I'm pleased to introduce our new executive director who hails from Lancaster County.
Hud, I'm sorry, real quick, you are on the agenda. So do you want to just wait for one second and see?
Oh, sure. I'm sorry. I saw Roman number one and I figured...
Yeah. Just stay there because you may be right up. Anybody for non-agenda? Hud, please step up to the podium.
And this is on, this is recorded, right? I just did that on purpose. Anyway, I'm pleased to introduce our new executive director. She hails from Lancaster County. She's been with us for four months and she's bringing some new ideas and organization to Dark. So I'm pleased to introduce Nicole Lueker.
Hi, everybody. I've been, as Hud said, Nicole Lueker. I'm from Lancaster County. I've been doing the recreation, in the recreation industry for about 20 years now, a little over 20 years. And I'm trying to bring some fun, new, interesting items to Dark in general. But current, just to kind of let you know, a couple of things that we're currently working on in your area, we are working with Sandy from the foundation here to do a butterfly program with families that we're going to be presenting here in the fall, which will be fun. I've also noticed a couple of interesting things here. I love the fact that you have the big room, so I'm going to be talking, I'm not sure which one of you I'll be talking to, about possibly using some space for some programming that way, if possible. But I also noticed that you guys have some great pickleball courts and would love to be able to utilize those for some courses actually, actually to teach people actually how to play, which would be a great thing to do. But I just look forward to working with each and what every one of you to expand any kind of programming. So if you have any ideas, please bring them to me. Or if any of the rec committee has anything, please feel free to reach out. And I look forward to working with every one of you.
Great, thank you very much.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Making sure I can... Okay, so now I need the overhead, Scott or Luke, whoever. They're tech guy these days. Is it still Scott? High-tech?
The device is between the two of us.
All right. Well, if you can zoom in on this, I'll do that.
Well, I would if I could.
Uh-oh. If you cannot, I have one I can share with all the board.
I think, isn't this in the packet?
I don't think so. You'll notice this is like kindergarten additions here, but I'll hand them up to them. Oh, you got that? Okay. All right, so I was going to start with the drawing that we're two did. This is of the parking area as exists now at the Bonsville Mill Park. And a couple of things have happened that have changed the configuration here. One is that we have the butterfly garden at what I would call the southern end, southeastern end, I'll call that, where it says Parks and Main Parking Area. Towards that end, towards the mill itself, that impinges upon the ingress egress at that end. At the other end, we have cars that are parking at odd angles and it's really cutting back on the number of spaces that we have available. And because we're ramping up our game down there, we've found that several times, certainly during events, that parking is at a premium. As you know, if you look at the bottom of that exhibit, it says Main Parking Area. Notice that there are eight, actually it's one large building, but there's eight units of townhomes in there that are owned primarily by non-resident owners. Luckily, we know several of those owners because we've told them that, and most of them are aware, that the parking area that their residents are using is owned by the township. It's been that way for many years. Township hasn't really used it, but now that we are utilizing it. There has been a couple of conflicts and we want to be proactive in coming up with a solution to that while we're creating our main parking area farther down at the southern end of the mill, which is where the horticultural gardens will go. So I have two of these exhibits. Hand them up to you and you can take a look and I can describe what's going on. So because of the change in the configuration and because we want to be proactive, we're coming up with ideas and we want to share them with the township as to what we think would be a good solution. The first of which would be, we want to make sure that there is adequate parking for the people that use the park secondarily, parking for those that are still utilizing the parking because of the, there's no parking at their townhomes. So I've come up with a, an entry and exit a one-way slanted parking. The reason we do it this way is because the site distance is better if people enter from the west and exit from the east. We're not soliciting comment at this point. We're just putting this out there, but we want you to take a look at it and then we'll come back later on in the year and see after the roadmaster has had an opportunity, the police have had an opportunity to look at what we're suggesting. But we've found that because several of the folks across the street have vehicles that take trailers, et cetera, we're recommending that there be some spacing along the Bonsville Road in a parallel fashion, not perpendicular or not slanted. We think we can get five spaces in there and because of the five spaces, we could still get approximately 20 in, towards the park itself. We have to get people to utilize the parking and in an organized fashion. We're recommending that that be done with bumper stops. So that'll all come out of our budget. But if we have the township's support, I think we can engage in a campaign now to educate both the owners and the residents that use the parking lot. We don't want it to become a bone of contention. We'd rather the residents continue to be able to use it because they have no other parking, except for the westernmost unit has some parking actually behind and to the side of its unit.
Hud, is that building you're talking about right now, is that an apartment complex? So they're going to have multiple, correct?
Yeah, there is, they're all townhomes. They're not connected.
The one on the end, though, that has the parking provided, is that one? I swear that one's...
I think they're all two bedrooms. The whole configuration to me looks like a parking unit, but if you go along, I mean apartment unit, but if you go along, there's eight different doors. But most of them are rented. And I think if we notify the owners to include in their leases that this is a gratuitous license or a transitional type license, the township will maintain control over it. We can hopefully notify those that are parking illegally. And it only occurs right now on Saturdays and special events. But as we put the gardens in next year and the year after and before the regular parking garage, parking garage, I wish, parking area goes in, then we think it'd be best to have some type of plan in place. And we'll come back to you with that plan after your input. So we want you to have a look at it first, come up with your own suggestions, and then we'll be back and hopefully have something to put in place this fall.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Any questions at this point? Okay. Sorry for the lack of the... Go ahead, Jason.
Matt, do we plow the parking lot?
We do not.
Yeah. I think it's just either ground down by the folks that are there or they might shovel it themselves. One of the people there probably has a plow, if he gets that deep, to plow in a crescent shape, but I've never seen a plowed.
I have no idea who maintains that parking lot. Now, our other parks, we do not plow them because we don't permit people in there during inclement weather or whatever, during the winter months.
Yeah, that's a good question. We do mow it, correct? I believe there, yeah, we mow it and weed whack it at this point. And there's weed control once or twice a year that comes out of the mill committee's budget for the rest of the area, the trails, et cetera. Okay. We'll be back to you later in the year.
I do have one question, Hud. Have you done any kind of a census, weekends during the week, to get an idea how many cars are parked there?
No. By word of mouth, I would say there's about 10, maybe 12. And they have visitors coming and going, so... But it only, as I said, the only time we've had conflicts are Saturday mornings when there's a lot of volunteers there or a special activity. Where we had Chester County Tours or Chester County Day there last year, it got a little hectic. And that's where the conflict occurred, so we don't want to have that yet. But I don't have a good number for you right now, Jay.
I'm just wondering how many resident vehicles...
10 to 12. I would say 10 to 12 at this point.
Okay. Then we're going to move on to support for the fair redistricting.
I have a few handouts.
Just for the record, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and street, please, street address.
Thank you.
If you wouldn't mind giving it to the woman at the end.
Good morning. I am Kristiana Ottinger. I live at Eight Talk Hill Road in East Brandywine Township. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about the proposed resolution for a more fair method of redistricting state and congressional legislative lines. Gerrymandering is the manipulation of electoral district lines to benefit one political party or person. In recent years, gerrymandering has grown worse due to new mapping and data mining technologies that allow parties to predict voting outcomes and draw borders to protect their party's control. When our district lines have been gerrymandered, the power of our vote is weakened. Communities may be divided between districts to weaken their voice. Districts packed with members of one party make it difficult for someone from the other party to run against them and members of the minority party are ignored. Our congressional district map, which is included to the first page in your packet, shows how we've been a victim of gerrymandering. In the top left is our district prior to 2018. So we're part of this, we were part of an oddly shaped conglomeration of municipalities that sort of avoided reading. And that district included four different counties and split up 15 different municipalities. After the state Supreme Court ruling in 2018, our district became more consolidated. However, this map will change after the 2020 census. So you'll also find a copy of the Pennsylvania House District Map and Senate Map, and you can see our current borders there. But these lines also will change with updated census data. So currently, our redistricting process puts elected officials in charge of drawing the borders. There are two elected Democrats, two elected Republicans, and then a fifth person who needs to be agreed upon by the other four. And then if they can't agree, the fifth person is determined by the state Supreme Court. So the last time we did redistricting, that was a Republican majority court, and then this coming redistricting, it will be a Democratic majority court. So this is why this isn't really a partisan issue. Both parties have been guilty of gerrymandering and both parties do it when provided an opportunity. So if our redistricting process stays the same, gerrymandering will continue to worsen. Gridlock, polarization, and lack of compromise are just some of the effects of gerrymandering. So there are bills in the Pennsylvania House and Senate which would create an independent citizens' commission to take over the process of drawing our district lines in a fair, impartial, and transparent way. House Bill 22, House Bill 23, and Senate Bill 22 all have bipartisan support tackling this issue. To date, there are 319 passed resolutions in Pennsylvania. In Chester County alone, 22 townships and boroughs have passed a resolution in support of an independent citizen redistricting commission. So like Downingtown, West Bradford, Euclid, Upper Euclid, Honeybrook, that's just some of the local townships and boroughs that have passed resolutions. In addition, the Chester County Commissioners declared their support on the issue, and I included their letter of support in the packet. And then most recently, the Pennsylvania State Association of Boroughs adopted a resolution in support of the Independent Citizens Commission. So we need your help to send a clear message to Harrisburg, passing a resolution calling for redistricting reform that is fair, transparent, and impartial, lifts up the voice of East Brandywine, and says, "We believe in protecting democracy." So the very last item in the packet is a copy of a proposed resolution. Thank you. Any questions?
I actually have two, because I believe you and I had an email correspondence and, correct?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I have like 20 a day, so I'm trying to remember details here. The one question that I had, based off of the one email you had sent, you had sent the resolution that I believe you guys were looking, or whoever you represent, was looking for.
Fair District's PA.
Fair District's PA. Is that the form? Because I get very confused because the commissioners being in favor of a redistricting plan, but was it that exact redistricting plan or was it a similar redistricting plan? Was it a similar worded? Because...
I mean, they didn't sign the resolution that I sent, the copy that I sent you. They wanted to word it their own way. So that's why, that's the letter. That's what they agreed to.
Okay, because I did start looking into this. And the confusion is, it's a broad statement to say, "We're in favor of this plan," when the plan is written by every different municipality, it's written by every different group representing the gerrymandering. So one person's gerrymandering plan is different than another's, or it might be some slight variation. And until, that's where I think we're going to have a problem. Until there's a set aside, this is it, everybody backs it, you know, party to party, I think that's where the problem's going to arise. The second thing is, again, this is totally my opinion right now. When you're dealing with elected officials, they're elected by a party usually, okay? The only person, to my knowledge, and Jay and Jason might correct me on this, is judges are able to cross-file. Therefore, there's really not a party, per se, backing them 100%.
True.
So I look at it like, how can elected official, other than a judge, be impartial? Because a party has backed them, be it Democratic, Republican, independent, someone has backed them. So that's the other question. I have a hard time figuring out how it's going to fold, you know, unfold in terms of political affiliation.
Well, currently, we have the judges involved, so that's why there's an issue with the impartiality, right? The proposed, what is proposed through like House Bill 22 and 23 is this independent commission where, and you probably could speak to it better than me, because I'm just, I'm not actually a part of Fair District's PA, I'm just like cheering them on. There is a more, like this independent commission that's being proposed is comprised of citizens and I guess there's sort of like an application process and, I don't know, they try to make it a little more fair so it's not biased by elected officials who have something to lose or something to gain based on how the lines are drawn. Going back to your first question about the resolution, I believe that townships and boroughs are just lending their voice to the idea that they want a fair, impartial process, whatever that may be. Not necessarily, "We want it a specific way." And I think that's why, although Fair District's PA came up with a kind of a template that a lot of townships have used, not everyone uses it, you know, townships want to word it, but, you know, the way they feel comfortable, so.
Okay. Well, I mean, I think we, the way that we left it with the last, now again, I will be honest with you. The last time that was brought up, it was brought up with one of the heads of the Democratic Party, and I said, "Look, to be fair, I need to go to the Republican Party and the independents and talk to them and see." And I have done that. And the Republican Party's, not official, but their words to me were, "We're going to let this play out in the courts and see where it goes." And again, that's kind of where their stance was. I never heard back from anybody on the independent side. However, you know, that's not saying, you know, one thing way or the other. But I think we, as the board, you know, back then, were kind of saying, "We were going to hold tight on this and see where it played out." But things may change. I think we would have to have a discussion with the board to try and figure out, you know, where we think the township should be involved, or if we should not be involved. And I don't know, are you guys comfortable in deciding anything right now, or do you want some time to mull it over?
Well, I haven't had an opportunity to look at the proposed legislation or really do much research. My concern has always been that, from what I understand, what has been proposed, you still don't remove the selection process from politics of the people that are part of the commission. So I'd have to be convinced that that commission was really apolitical, and I don't know how you make it apolitical. And to your point about judges, I will tell you, if you think judges are impartial...
Well, I guess they're...
You're naive at best.
Yeah, they're the ones that I guess have the ability to hide their representation by party by being able to cross-file.
They certainly attempt to be as impartial as possible, but everybody goes into the process with a certain bias and that's, it gets reflected in those decisions, so...
Which is why I kind of brought up that in the past, it was more Republican controlled, not controlled, but the judges were, there were more Republicans, Republican judges, so that influences it, and then it's flipped now.
I don't think any rational person would argue that your 2011 maps represent anything that makes any sense at all. So I think I can agree to that, but how we get from that to something that's apolitical and based simply on some logical basis, I don't know.
Is it something that is, can we say as a township that we support an impartial process without naming the process?
That's something we have to consider.
Me personally, yes.
All right, thank you for your time.
Well, thank you very much.
Kristiana, what I'll do is I'll download those two House bills and distribute those to the board. Honestly, I haven't seen that, the, yeah, the House bills haven't come across my desk or information from the state association. So I'll get those and hopefully that'll help make a decision.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to go into the previous, minutes of previous meetings for the Board of Supervisors, June 20, 2019.
June 20?
June 20, 2019.
Motion to approve is submitted.
And I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
And the planning commission, June 5, 2019.
Motion to approve is submitted.
All in favor?
Aye.
I don't believe we have any old business, so we're going to move on to new business and head over to Matt for the server room AC proposals.
Okay. Actually, I have two items for discussion. The first one is the server room. It has a split system which is not working. We've had it attempted to have repairs to it on three occasions. It's believed that the inside unit has a freon leak and without freon, it won't work. So I've obtained three prices. First price from Honeywell for $6,069.72. Second price from FXT for $4,500. And the third price from Madsen for $9,800. During this process, Solicitor Esti was contacted in reference to FXT. The owner, Francis Taraskey, is on one of the committees for the township, so Mr. Esti has recommended that we not consider FXT. So I'm recommending that you accept the proposal from Honeywell for $6,069.72.
Is this the one that Honeywell was already out a couple of times to fix?
Correct.
So my concern is if Honeywell couldn't fix it, and they've, I mean, this was last year, maybe?
On two occasions this year.
And they don't take any account to the cost that we've already paid them for the repair that they couldn't repair?
No, that's considered like a service, a service call.
And they didn't initially install the unit.
I would prefer to get a couple more quotes.
Well, I guess the next question is, is this a matter of life and death if this thing's not up in the next couple of days?
No, it is not. We currently have a fan blowing air from, but...
So our central air that's cooling the building currently right now is being lifted into that room via the fan?
Correct.
Okay. And, I mean, I'll be honest with you. I mean, I've been here a short two years, but I think I've already dealt with Honeywell's bills three or four times. And I'm concerned that whoever we're getting representation from Honeywell is not doing a very good job because I feel like, you know, it's, this is like the third or fourth time in two years that they've been out to fix this problem. And clearly, it's easy to say, "Yeah, just put something in new." Absolutely. But why wouldn't they have said that the three prior times?
Just, you know, an attempt to make the repair to the unit. They added a, an additive to the freon that is supposed, almost like anti-leak or whatever that you would add to your radiator. That was on the last occasion to try and plug whatever the small leak is, and that wasn't...
So we have no idea where the leak is, right?
They're not exactly sure. It's more than likely in the outside unit.
It's hard to tell. That's what my question is, is there something you could put in there that can kind of...
Not really, it's not worth, like, for those, it's not worth it. But they should credit the service calls towards the new unit.
So you want to table that?
I just have a bad taste in my mouth with this Honeywell company. And obviously, it would have made more sense to go with the FXT for the lower, obviously we have a problem there, but...
I think we should discuss that problem with Tom, too, so that's...
All right. If we can table this for at least a couple of days so that we can discuss this a little bit further.
Fine. And if you'd like, I can obtain additional...
Maybe, yeah, that would be a great start.
Okay.
And then, I'm sorry, your second?
Okay. The second item I have, which mislaid, added into your packet, is the recommended taking the funds towards the PRP plan and putting them towards investigating the condition of the stormwater pipes within the Aspen, within Aspen Drive, which is a Marshall Farms development. And I know there was some emails going back and forth a little bit yesterday about the, one of the reasons why we've done this is that the current HOA from the Hideaway Development has not permitted the township to go onto their property to do an assessment of the stream. And so I know there was a new committee that was going to come on to the HOA board, and I'm not sure if that has happened or...
We did, I did confirm that that's, the elections are going to be, I think it's July 25th, so my suggestion would be that we defer this to August and see how that plays out.
Yep. And then actually, Matt, after I did see the pictures, my other question I had for you was, is there a way to do an internal fit-out inside of the old pipes with a high poly?
There's numerous ways to rehabilitate corrugated metal pipe. A lot of companies have come out with different methods. There's some, as far as, there's a, I'll call it a machine that they pull through that sprays concrete on the inside of it.
Like a gunite.
The, there's also a plastic that they pull through and then they heat it, pull it through, and then blow it up inside the pipe. I mean, there's numerous different ways for...
And have we looked at those costs?
That's what I would have Cedarville, the engineer...
And just so everybody's aware, we're digging up corrugated pipes that are steel and dated and putting in new... And just so everybody's aware, we're digging up corrugated pipes that are steel and dated and putting in new concrete pipes.
Concrete or HDB.
And what I was suggesting was running a pipe through the old pipe and letting that be the new load-bearing point.
We would have to find what would be the most cost-effective way to...
Okay.
Either replace or line the pipes.
So I guess we'll leave this one to the first, either work session or first evening session board meeting, because that would be after the, after the HOA meeting for, for that particular, particular development.
Okay. Yeah, and we would like to, once, once a new HOA board is in place, we would like to schedule a meeting with them to discuss the proposed project of stream restoration.
Okay.
There's, there's another thing that's involved in that, too, is that the Army Corps has like a easement over that area, so we would also have to, in so many words, gain permission from the Army Corps to go in and do this work. There has been conversations with the Army Corps, but we have not gained that permission to date.
All right, and I was going to say, I can't see it right now, but I was going to check and see my calendar. What, perhaps, maybe, I know Jay couldn't be at the meeting, either Jason or myself, and if, if that conflicts with one of our schedules, we'll have, we'll try to have township representation at the meeting so we can get a feel for where this goes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to go hand it over to Luke now for the run for the parks.
Yeah, good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is the sixth time I've, I've approached you about permission to use the roads in the Timbers and in the Cross Keys neighborhood for a 5K race that is a fundraiser for Parks and Recreation. To, to date, the annual event has raised about $35,000 for capital improvements in the township parks. I'm respectfully asking that the board authorize the use of township roads as shown on the exhibit before you from 9:00 AM to 10:30 on race day. Staff will be seeking similar authorization for the point where it crosses a state road at North Guthrie'sville. Staff intends to use signs placed at the entrances to the impacted neighborhoods to provide advance warning to residents.
I'll make a motion we authorize the use of the township roads in the Cross Keys development and on, what is it, August 17th, 2019, from 9:00 AM to 10:30 AM.
I'll second.
As Vice Chairman, I'll say, all in favor?
Thank you for your consideration.
We pass that. Just tell them we adjourned.
Okay, so now we're going to go on to the subdivision and zoning applications for NVR Inc. Weaver Tract. So I'm going to hand this over to our Solicitor, Mr. Esty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the board recalls, you approved a conditional use decision for what we call the Weaver Tract. The applicant was NVR Incorporated, and it was for an age-qualified residential community, which is permitted by conditional use. There were several conditions imposed as part of that decision, and Condition 1 indicated that the development would be restricted to residential dwelling units, which are occupied by at least one person 55 years of age or older per unit. The applicant is concerned that that condition could be interpreted such that all of the units had to be occupied by an individual 55 years of age or older. The, what is known as the Housing for Older Persons Act, which is an amendment to the Fair Housing Act, requires that a minimum of 80% of the units be occupied by someone 55 years of age or older. So since the appeal period was expiring and the applicant intended to file an appeal if we couldn't resolve this issue, I contacted the board members individually and asked whether they would agree that that condition would be interpreted to be consistent with the Housing for Older Persons Act, meaning that a minimum of 80% be occupied. A majority of the board authorized me to send a letter on July 1st, which confirmed that interpretation, that being the 80%. The applicant wanted the board to confirm that interpretation at a public meeting and authorize that the letter be attached to the conditional use decision. So the applicants requested that you entertain a motion to that effect.
Is that the appropriate way to do it? Should we amend the decision, or is this...
Well, technically, we might have to reopen the record to amend the decision, and I did not think that was necessary. I believe that the letter, if it's attached to the decision, will be sufficient for future purposes.
I'll make a motion we adopt, or we ratify the letter of July 1st, 2019, to Lindsey Dunn, clarifying the definition of housing for older purpose persons in Condition 1 of the decision.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, Ordinance Task Force updates. Discussion for Scenic Resources Amendments. Please.
Good morning. For those who don't know me, I'm David Sweet. I work with the Ordinance Task Force. And John Gott is with me as well, and will be doing most of the presentation, not a long one. We are in the latter stages, perhaps, of creating a scenic byway overlay district for the zoning ordinance. And the origins, the origin was the comprehensive plan of almost a decade ago now that identified scenic resources, mapped them, listed them, and recommended that they be protected in various ways. And one of those ways could be an overlay district in the zoning ordinance. The task force, about three years ago, decided they should look at the implementation measures in the comp plan across the board and see which ones were worth pursuing at that point, were prioritizing. And they did so, and this was one of those that made the list. So in the last three years or so, we've been starting to and then making progress on this overlay district concept. And it's now at the point where we thought it important to present to you, the board, how it might work and hopefully get your reaction to it. So John's the principal author. We have some visuals that will hopefully exemplify how some of the ordinance provisions would work. So I'll turn it to John.
Good morning. Again, my name is John Gott. I've been working with David and the task force on this particular ordinance. Again, the genesis of this ordinance is from the Township's Comprehensive Plan. As you know, comprehensive plans identify natural resources, historic resources, basically inventorying the resources of the township. One of the objectives of the comprehensive plan is to determine ways to preserve those resources. The township, at the time it was working on the comprehensive plan, decided to take a closer look at its roadway network. And at the time, there was a lot of effort at the state level and the national level to do scenic byways planning. So the township took a closer look at its roadway network and used the evaluation criteria developed by the state of Pennsylvania, which based their criteria on the National Scenic Byways Program. So what we did was we looked at the, what are called the intrinsic qualities of the roadways in the township. The intrinsic qualities along the roadways are basically the natural, scenic, historic, cultural, recreation, and archaeological resources of the township. How do those contribute to the roadway systems in the township? We took a look at those using, again, that same criteria that the national and state programs use. We identified scenic byways in the township that meet those criteria. So that was the emphasis that went into the comprehensive plan. And then part of the comprehensive plan was how do we go about protecting these resources, these scenic byways that the township has? The national and state programs identify a methodology by which you prepare a quarter management plan. The township was involved in its own comprehensive plan, so that was the vehicle the township used to identify these. And then at the national and state level, there are different ways of going about recommending the preservation and protection of these roadways. One of those methods that David mentioned was an ordinance, an overlay district, that would provide some guidance to landowners and developers on ways to preserve scenic byways. Essentially, what the ordinance does is, as an overlay, I think you're familiar with that concept, the underlying zoning district remains as is. There's no suggestion or recommendation that density be changed in any way in any of the zoning districts. What we're suggesting with the overlay district is that there are alternative ways to develop properties that can preserve and protect the byways' intrinsic qualities. And what, what we did was basically come up with that methodology in an overlay district. We're trying to incentivize and encourage landowners and developers to do things a little bit differently. And hence, the graphics that you have in front of you as part of your packet today talk to some of the recommended alternatives. Figure 1 deals with, you know, if you have a scenic view shed and a vista point from which you're looking off of a roadway, and you've identified a view shed that you'd like to protect, it can be as simple as relocating a building to be partly outside of the view shed. So what the ordinance tries to do is prevent a mechanism by which the township can discuss, negotiate, and, you know, be a party to what's going on in terms of development. Figure 2, if you can, Scott, if you can move that up a little, yep. Building height is reduced, and the building is possibly screened to reduce the impact on the view shed. So there's a table in the ordinance that identifies scenic view shed areas in terms of sub-districts within a certain distance from the scenic byway. The closer you are to the byway, the more disturbance can occur because of construction. So what we're suggesting is through things like landscaping, through things like reorienting or relocating buildings, through reducing height, there are ways that you can actually minimize the impact the closer you are to the byway. The further you get away from the byway, the less the impact, the less the standard that has to be met. Going on to Figure 3, we fully understand that there are significant resources that are within the byway today. A lot of those are historic resources identified in the comprehensive plan and in other ordinances by the township. What we're, what we're talking about in terms of resources that already exist, and a lot of these are contributing features, contributing being they actually add to the scenic quality of the byway. What we're suggesting is if you're going to do an addition, it might be best to place that addition to the rear of the building so you don't impact the byway, as opposed to putting it on the side. So Figure 3 is an example of a way that township could negotiate with the landowner to minimize their impact to the byway by just reorienting in addition to an existing structure. Figure 4, this is really a reorientation, another, another opportunity for the township to reduce the impact on the view shed by suggesting, you know, alternatives to the placement of buildings and the use of screening or buffering to minimize the impact to the view shed. So these, these are some of the tools that are recommended in the ordinance. And it's a negotiated process. Part of, part of the ordinance suggests that the four-step design process that already exists in the township code be utilized as a way of minimizing impact. Further suggests that developers and landowners come to the township and talk about these issues. The township's identified in its comprehensive plan, and through mapping the existence of the view shed areas, the existence of vista points, historic resources have been identified. So we have a lot of information about the resources we're trying to protect, and the idea is we want people to come to talk to us, talk, come talk to the township about what it is they plan to do, and possibly look at alternatives to what they're, what they're planning. So that's the, that's, in essence, the scope of the ordinance. And as David said, we wanted to bring it to your attention now so that we could have an opportunity to discuss it. We'd love to get your feedback. If there are changes that can be made, we are more than willing to work with you on that, to any, any extent you feel changes need to be made. And I think we're both here to answer questions at this point, and then possibly move this forward with the Ordinance Task Force.
So I guess the questions that I have, and I was jockeying them down as soon as you started talking to try and get something definitive from my end. The one issue that I see is, and I'm going to speak as clearly and loosely so everybody understands it, is government intervention. Essentially, the way I see it is the township is dictating to a homeowner or to a property owner that they can sell their property provided that they do it the way that we, the government, would like them to, to, to leave it to look for the resident's benefit. The, the second thing that I, and I'm going to go out of order here, but I'm just going to throw these out, and if any of them you could answer. I see a significant cost to the taxpayers as well, because the township, therefore, is going to have to have engineers involved, and we're going to have to have attorneys involved, back and forth with the homeowner to decide what, what alterations we, the township, would like to see. And then the third thing is, just a scenario, now the stormwater management and MPDS permits are limiting disturbances. So what happens in the case of we're now creating an MPDS issue with, with a homeowner or a landowner where their, their proposed, their proposed alterations are going to be in that area? And then, then it's up to them to come up with a creative, creative resolution to that problem. So those are the ones that I just quickly jotted down, and, and again, you can, in any way, shape, or form...
I see it less as dictating to property owners than trying to negotiate with them and work with them. I think the township is obligated under state law to have zoning and subdivision regulations. Those are rules and regulations that landowners need to follow, developers need to follow in order to do development that sort of meets the needs of the community without impacting negatively the community. An ordinance like this doesn't go beyond that requirement under Act 247. It basically just says, here's another way that we want to work with you to do things a little differently. Right now, the township has buffering and screening standards, landscaping standards. Worst-case scenario, there might need to be some landscaping. I don't see this as onerous, per se. It will involve applicants coming and talking to the township. They're going to come and talk to the Planning Commission. They will come and talk to Scott. There might be a, some coordination with the township engineer, although that may not be that big. It's really the township's embracing the resources it has and trying to figure out ways that it can best protect those resources. And yes, there's a negotiated process here. We're trying to encourage people to do things a little bit differently. So that's one point I wanted to make. The cost to the township, I don't see those as excessive. Again, there might be the need for engineer involvement. There might be the need for a little more of Luke or Scott's time in dealing with applicants. There might be a little more of the Planning Commission's time when they're preliminarily reviewing applications. I don't know if that would be excessive. I don't think it would be. Probably the best way to see how that plays out is to have something in place and see what kind of reaction you get, see what kind of, whether it's onerous or not. I mean, that would be one suggestion, I guess.
And is there other townships currently doing this?
There are other townships in Chester County that are looking at this right now. You're ahead of the, of the curve on this. Newcastle County and Delaware is doing this. State law is different in Delaware. Newcastle County has the Land Use Regulatory Authority rather than townships or boroughs. So the county is actually doing this. They're further along than, than your township. The impetus for this comes, again, from the national and the state programs. There are ordinances similar to this in other parts of the country. I'm not aware of any in Pennsylvania. I'm not aware of any in Pennsylvania, so you're definitely ahead of the curve on this. That's not necessarily a bad thing, but...
If I may, there are other municipalities in Chester County that have regulations which require houses to be located lower on ridge lines so they don't interfere with the scenic or try not to interfere with the scenic view along the roads. There is a township that has an ordinance which protects the Brandywine Battlefield scenic corridor along Route 1. So there are other, and I think the Conservancy worked on that ordinance. So there are other municipalities in Chester County that have similar requirements. I would say most of them are not overlays. The one I speak of in Pensbury Township is an overlay to protect the Battlefield corridor. But I can say, as I already did, that there are similar ordinances in other municipalities.
Willis Town Township is working on one right now. I want to get to your third point about stormwater management. I don't want you to feel that this type of ordinance would limit disturbance or cause stormwater management systems to be required to be placed elsewhere. I mean, I think we fully understand that there are certain requirements for stormwater management that none of us can really get around. We want to do the right thing. So in terms of things like stormwater management, at most, we'd be looking at screening and buffering, perhaps. But most of the stormwater management systems I think we're dealing with today are in-ground systems.
I meant more of a, if you're already at your buildable envelope for your MPDS permit, and all of a sudden, now we require them to push it outside the envelope to put these trees in or this buffering and screening, now all of a sudden, the earnest is on the homeowner or the developer to figure out a way to make it work and pay more money for something that they may not have had to have done otherwise.
Not sure I'm understanding.
This wouldn't apply unless they were doing an expansion of the use of the property. So they'd have to comply with any other requirements. So you're not going to, this is not retroactive.
The building envelope is based on the township's zoning and subdivision regulations. Your yard setbacks.
Right, but the state.
Impervious surface.
Right, but the state gives you, is it 1,000 square feet or 900? Disturbance. And what I'm saying is, if you've eaten up that, if you've eaten up that square footage, and now all of a sudden, you're bumping out of that, now you're required to do the MPDS permit, and now you're required to show stormwater management. So you could actually be forcing somebody who didn't have to do stormwater management into doing stormwater management.
Not by virtue of this.
Not at all.
I don't know how that's not possible. If it's going out of the disturbance area for your approved, if you are under the threshold and don't need an MPDS permit, and all of a sudden, now you have to put these trees in outside of the envelope that you were already...
What kicks in the stormwater management requirements are the increases in impervious cover that you put on a property. So that's the only thing that kicks in stormwater management. What we're suggesting here is, if you're going to increase the impervious cover on your property, can you do it in a way which is less impactful on the byway? It has nothing to do with whether you're required to do stormwater management.
I was saying, if you disturb an area outside of an envelope, once you start digging and track hoeing and putting, you know, spades in the ground, you've disturbed that area.
Correct. If I may, there are just two triggers for stormwater management. One is disturbance during construction. The other is net new impervious after construction. So if that, I believe that's chairman's.
So what I'm speaking of is, if you're in that envelope and you're good to go, and you haven't crossed the threshold, you don't need the MPDS permit, and you're barely there, but you've covered it. And now, we, the township, say, now we need you to disturb this area here and create these, now the disturbance is there. That's not a, we could decide that, as far as I'm aware. That's a state decision or the...
I think if you're referring to the screening element of this, I don't think...
I'm more to the disturbance area, not the screening. I don't, the screening doesn't...
Well, there's nothing other than the screening that's going to create disturbance as a result of...
The digging and leaving that envelope.
If you look at figure four up there, what we're talking about is reorienting. The amount of impervious cover remains exactly the same. So your requirements under your MPDS permit remain exactly the same because you've got the same level of impervious cover. All we're saying is, instead of having the building oriented so that the facade of that building faces the byway, you reorient it so that you see less of the building and you preserve more of the view shed. Same disturbance, same level of impervious cover, so it shouldn't, it shouldn't impact stormwater management.
John took this back to the comprehensive plan, and I wanted to just comment on why that ended up in the comprehensive plan. And it ended up in the comprehensive plan because we did a survey in the township, and the residents indicated that one of the things that they liked about the township and they wanted to see maintained was the view sheds and the character, it was the character of the township, but a lot of it was because of the view sheds that were available and so forth. So that's why this ended up in the comprehensive plan to begin with. I think you have to, and I, it's a change in thinking, you have to think about these view sheds as a resource. And what this ordinance is intended to do is to provide a mechanism to help protect that resource, analogous to the provisions in our ordinance that protect natural features, for instance. We've identified natural features as something important that need protection, so our ordinance restricts any development where slopes are over 25% and all those things that are in natural resources. We've identified riparian corridors as something that's important to preserve. And so we have a riparian corridor ordinance that restricts what the landowner can do within the riparian corridor. So to me, this is just one more evolution of identifying what is a resource in this community and then trying to protect that resource. It doesn't say to a property owner, you can't build there. What it says is, you need to look at this resource and minimize the impact on that resource, and here are some ways that you should consider doing it. And the reality is that, right now, most people don't look at that resource, don't consider that resource. They just plop the house or the development wherever they want without taking that into consideration. So all this does is require you to evaluate your impact on that resource if you're in one of these zones where we've identified that the resource exists.
Okay, and have these areas been, have these areas been laid out? This is area A, B, and C?
They've been identified.
Okay, do we have that in front of us today?
They were first identified in the comprehensive plan, then we did an update of those based on developments occurred since the comprehensive. I don't know if that, the township engineer was working on that map to update that map. I don't know, Scott, whether you have that available currently?
But we're, the task force has seen a draft of that, and it's being evolved, so that's certainly something that could be provided to you.
Yeah, I just don't, I don't want anybody wasting time, not wasting, but I don't want anybody spending time on something, especially, you know, a blanket supervisor vote on something that we, I don't even know what the district is. I mean, it might be one neighborhood, it might be one farm, and it might be, you know, so I think right now, you know, and I did go to our solicitor when this was first brought up, and there was concerns by the solicitor at the time of this proposal. So obviously, I would definitely need a little bit more time, but I don't want people, you know, putting too much energy into something until at least we have a broader understanding of it.
I certainly understand the need to evaluate this more thoroughly. We weren't asking you to adopt anything today. What we wanted to do is bring it to your attention, or get you as much information as you want. I think Scott has pulled up the map there. We can, we can come back. We can go over this map. We can talk more about the ordinance itself, once you have an opportunity to review it in more depth. So we're available to help in any way deemed necessary.
John, what is, in response a little bit to that, we've had two or three meetings with Kristen, going back to last year, I guess, and she expressed her concerns, and some of them do relate to the map, so that property owners can be advised right at the beginning if they're affected by it. So the map is showing view sheds, it will show property lines in relation to those. There'll be a lot of properties in these corridors that are not in a view shed, but they may have a contributing feature, or they may be proposing new construction that then in itself could impact. So we've worked with Kristen and with Nate to get the map as instructive, I guess you'd say, as possible, so it's clear who's affected. And we've also, we're kind of in a second generation of the regulatory side of it, where we've tried to categorize properties as to whether they have a resource on their property, whether they don't have any, whether they're in a view shed. And the applicability of the ordinance to those properties varies depending on which one, which situation.
I mean, right at this time, I just envision a huge burden on the taxpayer. Who's deciding what's a view shed? Who's deciding what's a nice feature? We're sending engineers to go look at properties. I highly doubt volunteers are going to just take their free time and go over during a planning commission meeting and look at a property and make a decision. Right now, that's where my thoughts are.
I think, I think that's, it's similar to the historic resource ordinance. All of that's been identified. It's all on the map. It's not, engineers are not going to be going out and looking at it. So if a property is identified as having a view shed, if a development proposal comes in, just like if there's a historic resource on that property, they have to do a historic impact report, they would have to do a view shed report as part of that application. And then the engineer would just review that report to make sure that it complies with the ordinance, and then the planning commission, just like they do with everything else, would review it. So I don't, I think your concern about dramatic increase in costs is misplaced.
Who has final authority? Who has final say? You say suggestions, you say recommendations. It's an overlay, it's going to be part of our zoning now. So if you look on your sheet, and I'm going to be doing an addition, and generally, people plan their additions on how they feel it's going to situate their property or how they like to enjoy their property. And then if you give us, if you would give me a recommendation, is it a recommendation or is it saying, you can't put it here, you need to put it on the other side of your home? Because to me, this isn't a burden on the residents, this is a violation of...
It's a recommendation. It's not burdensome to the extent, if the homeowner decides that they want to do what they want to do, the township may require some buffering and screening, but it's not going to tell them they can't do what they want to do.
Well, then why do we need, why do we need it? Make a recommendation during the permit process?
Because this provides a vehicle by which you can make...
Unclear about that.
This provides a vehicle by which you can make recommendations and require landscaping, buffering, and screening. There are other tools as well that are built into the ordinance. There's the front yard setback, there's buffering and screening, there's grading and earthwork standards, so it helps lessen the impact.
But you have height restrictions. But this is zoning, though, so it's going to be final say is township, not the owner. So just say that, then. Don't say suggestions and negotiations and...
Well, no, there are prescriptive standards, but...
This is going to give the township another layer of authority to be able to depict what a property owner can do with their property. I mean, that's, we're here, you guys are here today because Kristen suggested, before we continue to waste resources, to go down this path and research this and develop the maps and everything else, is this something that the township wants? Is this what's going to be good for the township? And that's why we're here today. We're not here today to talk about a map or adopt anything. We're here to say, do we want to continue spending money on this or not? And I think that, I mean, I live on properties on a map, regardless of I live on a property on a map. I mean, you would be crazy if you think that I'm going to ask the township to say, I can put this chicken coop over here or over there. You know, to me, it's just a huge violation. I mean, there's different ways of protection. That's why we have, you know, we purchased conservation rights or development rights. I don't think we need another overlay district to confuse.
The owners procedurally is on the front end of the process.
Who is?
The, you're either going to be dealing with a subdivision or land development application or a building permit application.
A building permit. So if I want to build a deck, I have to pay a scenic overlay permit fee to do a, to do a report to you to tell you how I'm going to mitigate any concerns?
Not necessary.
It's a building permit. You just said it was a building permit.
Well, you're getting a building permit anyway.
Sure, but now I have to do an additional cost. Do a report to you and have our resource overlay committee to make sure that I'm not going to impact the view of everyone else on my property.
Those two, the permit and the overlay committee do not exist in the ordinance.
But then how are we going to...
It's a, it's a front-end process which hopefully will be productive, maybe won't. Excuse me, there's only so much the township can mandate in this situation.
This is zoning, though. This is zoning. This isn't subdivision, this is zoning. It's an overlay district. That's completely different. 350, 399, it's different.
I understand.
But it's not, recommendations for 350, that's negotiations of 350. We have the power to negotiate. 399, you don't. You have to pay another to go before the zoning hearing board.
That's an aspect of our conversations with Kristen that have not led to recommended changes. She's comfortable, I believe, with the way we've written that.
She told me differently, but when I asked her...
All right, I guess, you know, right now, I think we're going to have to definitely talk about this. The other thought that I was, just occurred to me was, is this something that we could grandfather all homeowners into right now, and then only upon resale? If an area were to be considered a view shed, then the new buyer would then be responsible for it? Because I don't think it's fair to go to homeowners currently and say, oh, by the way, you can't do that because we made an ordinance. But if it were resold possibly, and it was considered an overlay, not an overlay, but an area of view shed capabilities, then the new buyer, that way, you're giving a loophole to the people who currently own it. Has that been thought about?
Tom will have to address that, but I don't think you can do that under the MPC.
Yeah, I don't think we could do that.
All right. Well, at this point, I, me personally, I find a little bit more cost burden on taxpayers and township for something at this point. You know, that's my opinion. I would definitely like some opportunity to sit with the solicitor a little bit more and get feedback. As of two months ago, it was a hard no, but I didn't have an opportunity to sit and get all the reasons why. And I'd like to take her opinion, my opinion, and make a fair and balanced decision on this. So I think at this point, that's where I am.
I think we should just remove it altogether. We have to, our comprehensive plan's up for be looked at again, about every 10 years?
Yeah, that's right.
So we can eliminate, I think I looked, we can eliminate, I think it was like two different line items, and it'll go away. That's my opinion.
All right.
I did do research, and I did go to the task force meeting, and I'd done my, you know, I've looked into it more, and I just, I'm not trying to be rude either, but I just, like, my blood gets boiling when I start thinking about another layer of something that property owner has to be submitted to.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go on to Scott for recommendation for advertising.
At their meeting last night, the planning commission recommended the board authorize advertising for the following combined ordinance amendments for medical marijuana, historic resource impact study, definition of school, allowing schools by conditional use in the mixed-use commercial district, and also amendments to 399, 137, conditional use standards. Those have been combined into one ordinance to save on advertising costs.
Any questions?
I'll make a motion. We authorize advertising the proposed ordinance amendments.
I'll second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Scott again for the Brandywine Conservancy.
Just a reminder that Brandywine Conservancy... Just a reminder that Brandywine Conservancy will be here next Thursday morning, July 18th at 8:00 a.m. for a presentation on green stormwater infrastructure. They originally had a breakfast meeting scheduled at the Danningtown Country Club in May. They canceled that due to lack of pre-registrations. And actually, the only ones who pre-registered were East Brandywine, four from East Brandywine Township. So they're bringing the program to us. The, this is basically a presentation to determine if the township would be interested in participating in a review of our existing ordinances and some updating on repairing buffers, repairing corridors, those types of things as far as stormwater management. And there would be no cost to the township because they have a grant from the William Penn Foundation to underwrite this, similar to what we had done before with our repairing corridor standards. So that's, if you hadn't contacted me before and were interested in attending, please let me know because I need to get John Thylak or at Brandywine Conservancy a final number of attendees.
Thank you. I don't believe we have any ordinances or resolutions for consideration today. Is there any public comment on the agenda items today? Seeing none, I did want to make note that the board will be meeting in executive session this morning as well as, I believe, we have a, another meeting coming up next for the.
Right, the East Brandywine Township Foundation, 501(c)(3), sponsored by the township, has a meeting following this.
Okay, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.